Now call this a regular workshop meeting to order. And council, you have a copy of the agenda for tonight's meeting along with several consent items and minutes from the regular workshop meeting on April 16, 2019. A regular meeting on the same date and a special workshop meeting on the 23rd. So make a motion to approve the agenda along with the consent items and the minutes.
So moved.
Set.
Motion set and then discussion on it. Here not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Alright, so we're going to go directly into the budget workshop and I'll turn it over to you at this time.
Thank you, mayor, members of council. First of all, I'd like to apologize to you. When I went to my coat rack, I suddenly found that my coat must be in the closet at the house. So I normally do not dress casually for what I consider to be important meetings any time we get together. So I do apologize for... But the good news is, this is a brand-new white shirt.
Makes up for... Actually, you look like you're working more when you got your coat off. It looks serious. I've got some things to do here.
Serious.
Show a dress for the occasion.
Well, again, my apologies. For the last several weeks, we have been working on the budget. What we'd like to do this evening is spend as much time as we can and cover as much items as we can up to the 6 o'clock hour where we have a public hearing. So at this point, what we'd like to do is review some of the budget notes. You asked about details last week regarding the general fund transfer. This material was sent to you last week, but the public obviously does not see this. So you can see the type of transfers that go from the general fund for SROs, of course, our school resource officer, supporting the transit. As you know, the transit is 80%, 10%, 10%, 80% federal, 10% state, and the city's contribution is about $400,000. Bulletproof vest grant, the capital reserve fund, and then, of course, your continued support of solid waste. The second note that you asked us to look at was the cost of issuing bonds. You know, while I told you it was about a million dollars, y'all learned over the years that Gail doesn't let me do math in public, the real number for issuing the bond in 2012 was right at $364,000. So if we are able to use a new state law so that we do not have to deal with the issue of going to a full bond issue, you could substantially save a lot of money. Note number 27 had to do with the ERTs for the automatic readers. Mr. Bittner, from his days as being the city manager, where he was out there in the middle of the night fixing meters for people, knows that a meter really doesn't wear out, but there are components that do wear out. The ERT, as we have come to call it, stands for the encoder, receiver, transmitter. And the details here, it's not the meter itself, it is the components. Limited factory battery life, the city has the 50 and 60 series ERTs. Of course, when we bought them 10 years ago, they were the newest thing on the market. But like everything, there's now a 100 series. And the 100 series can do amazing things. Problem is, they're not free. So as you'll recall, we have put in the meter budget $120,000 to begin a 10-year replacement program. And you can see that these come with a 20-year warranty, two-way communication, allows fixed location reading. As Mr. Massey mentioned to you, we are going to make sure before we begin to buy these that we're looking at technology that would give us flexibility beyond the technology we had in the past. We know that Jones Angelo is moving in a very professional and thoughtful way to come up with a regional system where you don't have to drive by the actual meter, but it's just simply at a regional location and all of their electric meters respond to that. So exactly what we will buy is yet to be determined. We'll keep you informed. But this is the information regarding the ERT unit itself. When it comes to the landfill cost, we did have very good news. I appreciate the mayor working with Chairman Bright on this issue. What we have been told is that the county is not going to raise the landfill charge for the coming year. I think that's commendable, especially given the impact of the hurricane on the overall community. But we've now been told that the county is not going to raise their landfill cost. The amazing thing, though, is when you look at garbage at $49 a ton, you say, well, you know, how much money do we spend? A lot. You know, because you provide excellent sanitation service for the residential as well as the commercial customers, there is a lot of material moved every week. You will recall that, you know, three pickups a week at a residential house, 52 weeks a year, times the total number. Kerry and his personnel give about 1.6 million customer service calls to the residents of Jacksonville every year. And it comes with a cost. In FY '17, and these are the actual numbers from '17 and '18, final numbers, obviously, for FY '19 are still to be produced. But you can see it's over $1.6 million. Now, I certainly don't know what the budget is for all of the county landfill, but if you're assuming that roughly a third or 40% of the population lives inside the city and roughly 70% of the commercial is inside the city, if this is what we're producing, then the people out in the county must be producing about the same amount or maybe even more. So we're very fortunate to have a professionally-run landfill. We're very fortunate to have an excellent sanitation crew, and Kerry does a great job. So, Mr. Terrell, thank you very much for your work.
Dr. Woodruff.
Yes, ma'am.
On this slide, for FY '18, for the city departments, 197 tons is almost half of what it was the year before. What contribute to that?
Actually, I have no idea because I did not notice that until you just said it. I would assume that that's a typographical error, but Kerry, do you have any thought?
Not at this particular point in time. It's simply that the departments hadn't taken as much as last year to the landfill. Normally, the bill does run through sanitation, and that's the simple explanation is just that they haven't picked up as much tonnage from this year than last year.
We will verify that, though, because, you know, when you look across the board at the totals, you know, but it could also be the fact that your city departments are being much more frugal and they're not throwing away as many things.
Or Mr. Massey's recycling program.
That could be. Actually, it looks like Mr. Hanson has the answer.
Well, I don't know that I have the answer, but some of the houses that we've demoed, in some cases, have actually gone to green recycling, which the numbers would not be reflected up here.
We will get the answer. That sounds like a pretty good answer, though. But again, you can see the contribution that goes to the county, and we are certainly fortunate that we have a very good relationship with the operators of the landfill. Stormwater, as you know, the Parkwood project was a major project that was accomplished about 10 years ago. The question was raised, when does this bond issue or when does that project's final payment come up? It's FY '21. So you'll have a payment in the proposed budget and then one after that, and that will free up a substantial amount of money to address other major drainage problems. And we certainly have two or three that are waiting in the wings that we'll be talking to you about in September and October. Those were the budget notes. Would you like any further explanation on any of those?
Dr. Woodruff.
Yes, sir.
I was thinking, is it... I'm thinking back to the hurricane. Is it possible because the contractors was picking up a lot of the garbage during that time, that it's possible that that's why the numbers are different?
It might be a little different because during that time, any horticultural material that we might have picked up, they would be picking up. But the good news there is the roughly...
What was the final number we paid the contractor? About $5 million?
It was over $5 million.
You know, that... None of that went to the county landfill. And we are certainly fortunate that the contract that the city had with Crowder Gov continues for the next year. Hopefully, we won't face any type of storms in the coming summer. We have a couple of pending issues that we'll be discussing later in the evening, but as you know, fire and emergency services and the concept of step plan, and then the compensation for general employees. Those are items that we would hope to get to, if not in the first part of the meeting, certainly in the second part. Department issues, as you're aware, I asked the departments to prepare a base budget that's within the guidelines of the money that they paid in previous year. Any additional funds that they need that are within their control become departmental issues. Now, what's a need that's not in their control? For example, we know the North Carolina retirement system said, we're going to have to contribute more money. So that was built into the base budget. We know that electricity has gone up this past year because of the due power rate increase. That was built into the base budget. But beyond that, we had a total of 39 department issues. What I'd like to ask you to do tonight is allow me to present the issues and make sure that you're comfortable because we are to the point now where we would hope this evening we could begin to get final direction from you so that we can finalize the budget. You will notice that in the general fund, water and sewer and in other, we, as manager, I approved 12 department issues. They were basically insignificant items. I have recommended denial on 12, and there are 12 pending in general fund, three pending in other. So let's look at where we are on department issues. Michael LaQuarrie would like to spend a little bit of money for a sod cutter. Parks and Recreation does a lot of work in moving improvements to ball fields and so forth, and instead of going out and using manual labor to basically dig up or using the old-fashioned, you know, plow to dig this up, what they're lacking is a sod cutter so that then you can come back in and put more sod. Portable bleachers, I will tell you, if you were at the Jacksonville Jamboree, you saw the bleachers. Our bleachers are the points now where we really cannot safely loan them out. So if we do not buy portable bleachers for the coming year, then I will tell you that it will be my recommendation that we no longer loan the bleachers to anyone. And who do we loan them to? Well, we loan them out for parades, we loan them out sometimes for other community events. The new bleachers are not overly expensive. Digital sign at the commons, as we have said before, the wooden sign that was there has been taken up. This would be a relatively small but digital sign that would allow you to see that the Jacksonville Jamboree, which, by the way, was a great success, is coming up on such-and-such a day, or there's a basketball tournament or whatever. And then treadmills, we have treadmills at the senior center that are heavily utilized by one of the council members and several of his running mates. So those are four items that I would recommend to you, but it's totally your call. What are your thoughts?
Richard, talk about the digital sign for a moment, because that really seems inexpensive.
Seems inexpensive?
Yeah. Is it tiny or is it just a red LED?
I actually don't know the details. I did not ask that, but I will find out. Anybody from Recreation here?
No. I just know that a $9,000 budget item for that is really, really small.
Well, let's do that. Let's take that off the table at the moment.
You don't have to take it off. I'm just... And I do these all the time, and it must be a tiny, tiny sign that's...
Let me find out the details.
We ought to do it, you know, at least halfway decent. It's going to be easy.
Let me find out the details about the sign. It may be, and I'm not sure why I didn't think of this before, but I didn't, is this one where we're financing it over three or four years, Gail, or do you know?
I don't think so. I think that was the price of the sign.
We will... For the moment, let's just set that aside. As far as the sod cutter, the portable bleachers, and the treadmills, are you comfortable with those or do you want any other...
Fine.
Okay. So those three, we will put into the budget. The digital sign, we will put on hold, and probably after the budget is adopted, we will bring you back more information. If we can do that before...
You don't have to on my part. I mean, you don't have to do that if you want to include that. I just know that it's not going to buy a whole lot.
I would prefer to set it aside. The closed captioning system, $7,892. This is part of your ADA program. I think that you would agree that that is something that is needed in any community, but the final cost, final decision is yours. Carmen, do you want to add anything on this because you're the head of the ADA group?
Yes, sir. Covering it.
Comfortable with that?
Comfortable.
That wouldn't make sounds as well?
Yes. Tense.
I thought you were pulling my leg there. Some of the other items, which I am not recommending, but I will welcome any department who is here to come forward and discuss their needs. The first is the assistant at moving from a part-time to a full-time. Ed maintains all of our equipment, and we have had a part-time person. The problem is, at the level of assistance, you can't find a person anymore who wants to work part-time in that environment. And that's a great environment, Ed. I didn't mean it wasn't a nice environment. What I mean is, this level of work, you either need to have a full-time mechanic or you're not going to have a part-time mechanic. We were fortunate to have a gentleman who was interested in it, but we have now advertised this for what?
Probably in January.
Yeah, and we have had a few people apply, but they are just simply not qualified. If you're going to move that to a full-time position, you're going to have to add $26,000 and change. Ed, would you like to comment about the need?
Yes, sir. And mainly it's for the...
Please come on. You look much better on TV up here next to me.
Good evening. The part-time position, it's a seasonal position. It starts the 1st of April, goes through the end of September. But its main purpose is to help our current technician with the mowers, the utility vehicles, the stuff that's heavily used in the landscaping business because it's issued so much, it's too much work for one person. So we end up pointing it out to either the auto mechanics, the truck mechanics, everybody kind of helps out. So as the city manager mentioned, the first couple of years, we got really lucky. We had a retired gentleman who was a mechanic, and he worked for us for a year and a half. Last year, in July, he was supposed to work through September, he was at home, and he hurt himself. He said he couldn't come back, so... And he's not available now. So we've been trying since January. It's been publicized both through the city and through the temp agency, and the few applications we got just, it's not worth it. And right now, like I said, we're starting to get into the heavy mowing season, and then what we noticed is that the work doesn't slack off in September. What happens is the type of equipment changes because, I use parts for example, they switch from landscape, they switch from mowing to landscaping, so they have smaller equipment. It's landscaping-type equipment so that the pace doesn't slow down. So we had assumed that the pace would slow down in the wintertime when we could stay with a seasonal worker, but over the last couple of years, that really hasn't been the case. The need is for a full year to help keep the turnaround time done because we don't have a lot of spare equipment for a lot of this stuff. It's, we only have one of them, so it's pretty critical to get that piece of equipment in, get it fixed, and get back out.
What I'd like to do is, because we have other people who are asking for employees that I'm not recommending, I'm not asking you to make a decision on any of these until you've heard from all, and then you can say, we're going to approve them all, or we're going to approve this one and this one, or we're going to go with the manager's recommendation. Ed, anything else?
No, sir.
I would like to publicly commend Ed. He's the, he and his people are the backbone. If their, if their equipment or their time is not available, then some department is not operational, and they do, I think, an outstanding job. So job well done.
Thank you, sir.
So cybersecurity engineer, this is one that we have talked about before. I believe that Jonathan, are you here? Go ahead, so you come in. Jonathan, you and Adam, why don't you all come up? As you know, Chris has left us, and currently, these two gentlemen are stepping up to help oversee the IT department. I don't know, have not talked to them about their support or lack thereof, but I know that Chris felt a cyber engineer was essential. Do you gentlemen have any comments you'd like to make to council on cyber engineering?
Sure. This is a position that would fill a gap for us. Currently today, we have two or three individuals that watch logs, maintain our security presence, and we do a good job. But as you know, it's becoming more and more of a hot topic as we see cities and counties being affected with ransomware. So this position would be a position that would be very beneficial to us in the future.
How many times a day, because I know it's not per week, it's actually per day, do we have attacks on our system?
Well, let's just go to, because there's many different attacks. So let's look at just email. Just our email server alone, in a 24-hour period, about 6% of the emails that we get come into the city are actually clean emails that get delivered. And that's out of about, I think it was 72,000 emails in a day. So most of those are either have malware or they're not a reputable company, so they get blocked, or there's some kind of spam marketing. And you'll see some, you'll get some of those that say marketing, something like that on your, tagged on your email, so you kind of know. But only 6% of that that comes in a day. And that's just one aspect of the way people are trying to get in.
So 6% is bad?
6% is good.
Is good.
So... Yeah, so we're all, we're blocking the rest.
So this, this position, this would be a dedicated person that would be monitoring our network, monitoring security risks, and putting together protocols to ensure that we keep the safest environment possible. You know, where now, it's kind of a do-or-die thing where we're all helping to do so, but we have a lot of other tasks, a lot of other things that we have to do in a day to where this sometimes goes to the wayside in some cases, and other people have to pick up the slack where, you know, this person would do it full-time.
Yeah, things are actually so busy at IT that Mr. Massey actually spends about four hours a day doing it.
How many, how many employees do we have in IT total?
13 currently. Two of those are GIS. And then I currently have four, and you have five, and then the two of us as manager.
Have you ever considered a monitoring company?
We have, and that's something we're looking into, too. The cost of that is substantially more than what we would pay for an actual employee.
Can you hear the comments? Any other questions on this?
Is it feasible to have a closed email system where employees are only allowed to receive certain kinds of email, or is that almost impossible to program?
No, that's kind of what we're doing currently. We have a, some software that we use that monitors that on a daily basis, but we still have to go in there and look for false positives. There's many times we get calls from, from employees saying, hey, I was supposed to get this email and I didn't get it. So we have to go in there and find that email, then unblock the user. And then sometimes we get them where things got through, so we have to go in there and block those. But we're as close as we possibly could get without making it detrimental to employees doing their actual job.
Other thoughts? Thank you, gentlemen. Deputy fire chief, and engine replacement, and fire training and so forth. So my corner, you and Jerry, and any of the other firemen who are here, y'all come up to them. We'll discuss all of these.
Council, thanks for your opportunity to speak tonight. Over the years, the fire department's gone down and administered numbers considerably. We also want admin assistant. We put boots on the ground because of our squads having to be up for service. We have, basically, myself and Sean are dealing two administrations personally left. Before, it was a fire chief, a deputy chief, and two division chiefs. Sean's overseeing training and prevention, I oversee operations, maintenance, and administration, myself. We're looking at expanding the position to allow more upper mobility in the organization and to actually take some of the things off our plates that Sean and myself are missing or can't get done in a specific timeframe. Second item there is engine replacement. That's a 25-year-old reserved truck. This year, that truck went down for a period of over six months due to issues we were having with it, and we actually had to borrow a truck from Pumpkin Center Fire Department so we could have an in-service truck at one time. We have two reserves. One was already in service, the second one had to go into service, and we didn't have one. So we actually had to borrow a fire truck. The next position is the fire training captain. Since we're moving into a different realm to, that we get more inclusive in our hiring process, we need somebody over full-time in that division, Monday through Friday, to handle the training. Right now, we're pulling an individual off-line, we're paying an overtime budget for that person to be there for the training. We're moving to a delivery agency type, which will be about 14 to 16 weeks for our new hires. So we get certified in firefighter 1-2 in-house. And currently, with that, we bring people off-line and paying overtime to cover the position while we're still paying them there.
We had some discussion about the six officers, and of course, the part-time officer is part-time traffic officer that would be assigned just to the school crossings.
It would be possible to find out how much overtime that we're paying for this as opposed to what we would be paying for a full-time position. That'd be some helpful information.
Yes, sir.
Question on your engine number seven. What kind of apparatus is that?
Remember the one that you rode into college? It's a sister.
Same year?
One year last. The one you rode to college was actually a little bit newer, but it was in worse shape than this one is, and this one here has started to fall apart.
But you used this in reserve?
Yes, sir. And so when we had to take a main truck down for repairs or out of service, we had to put that in service.
How old is this one?
25 years old.
How often is that truck deployed?
Regularly, monthly. I get your records on monthly.
Once a month?
At least. For days, not just one day, multiple times. Like, our engine went down this month with a front end, issued one of our main engines, so we had to put it in service.
It was in service last week?
Yeah, last week.
Who does your work?
We have Captain Brown that does it, and then when he's out right now, Ed's been generous to help us out. now, um, Ed Ben, Ed Ben generous to help us out.
Thank you, gentlemen. Just for the record, to show how we believe in diversity, uh, Sean is a New York Yankees fan, uh, Jerry is a Red Sox fan. But the, the two budget notes from those are going to be, uh, the overtime cost, and then the other is going to be the utilization of the reserve. Okay, Central Permitting Specialist, Ryan?
Thank you, Doug. Mayor Council, I believe the next two are associated with our area. The first one being a part-time permit specialist, a central permitting specialist. Uh, with the one-stop-shop situation we created back a few years ago, they're really, the, the permitting specialists are triaging the permits, they're checking things so that other staff members aren't having to sign off on steps that they don't need to review. Uh, the office experienced over 16,000 calls within a 12-month period. So, you know, that doesn't include walk-in traffic. So, we're, we're anticipating some, some residential growth as well. You know, five to seven single-family developments in the, in the coming months. So, this was to kinda provide some assistance for the central permitting staff. Likewise, for the next position, the building code inspector one is kinda twofold. It's to help us with those residential developments when they come onboard. The state now requires us to perform inspections within two business days. And this will also allow us to begin to train, because level three inspectors are, have become difficult to get. So, this would help with some internal training, uh, of those inspectors, at least to a level two, to accommodate most of what we have here in the city, and hopefully get them to a level three as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I assume we're, I assume we're anticipating, uh, increased permits. Uh, I know that we went through a period where we looked like our revenue was down as, as our permitting was down, but it looks like we may be trending up. Is that what we're, what we're hearing?
Yeah, with, with the St. Lawrence Home Tribe, the vineyard, you know, that's a development the size of Carolina Forest, and there's also several other developments. It's just a matter of, they haven't been turned in yet. So, we're anticipating, but then again, it may not happen, so.
I think on your code inspector, uh, you may see a recommendation next year to add an inspector, because, you know, we did, uh, we did downsize as the economy turned down. Uh, we all know that when you have a vacant piece of property, you're not gonna build a house on it the first week. It takes a while to do that. Uh, it would not surprise me that if in next year's budget, there is a recommendation to, uh, go ahead and add that inspector.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Thank you.
I would like to also commend Ryan, uh, because of the excellent work that he's done relative to the hurricane recovery, as he has kept you up to date, especially on the shoreline drive matters. As you know, we are now, I guess, Ryan, you'd call it phase three of the purchase of those 16 units, or whatever?
Well, I'm sure the residents would tell you it still feels like phase one, but we are optimistic that we will be able to provide that buyout from our, for our citizens in the coming months. Just a slow process, because, you know, we're dealing with state and FEMA.
This is not Alan Baker. Alan Baker is, uh...
I'm sure he's fixing something. No, I'm not going to do it, Alan, this evening. Facilities Maintenance is responsible for maintaining, um, all of the city buildings, but, uh, beyond city buildings, they also maintain other facilities. They support, uh, maintenance on the splash pads, they support maintenance on the Freedom Fountain, amongst other things. So, this request is to, um, help them with their black backlog of work orders that they have, and for the additional facilities that we are adding to the city system. You know, very shortly, we'll have Sturgeon City that we are adding. In the not recent past, we added the Center for Public Safety. And, um, as we continue to add buildings, especially buildings of that size and magnitude with the systems that we are adding, um, we're continuing to stretch our, our people further.
Any questions on any of the personnel? Uh, so let's go back then. Uh, what I'd ask is, uh, it is time for us to begin to ask you for some decisions, so, I'm just gonna walk through them. Yes or no on the, uh, request to move part-time to full-time in the shop? Yes or no on the cyber?
Yes or no?
Well, I'm comfortable with the manager's recommendations.
So, I assume, Mr. Bittner, you're saying all these recommendations?
Yes.
Okay. We will get you more information.
You're very comfortable with the manager's recommendations?
Yes, I am.
Is that the will of the council on all of that?
I'd like to know about a subscription for dealing with, cause of, with cyber attacks, the subscription. I had mentioned concerning trying to find out a subscription for, uh...
Talking about contracting?
Cyber, yeah, contracting it out. For monitoring.
We'll get you information on that. Any of these items you want to discuss further?
I think for this year, I mean, there's obviously some positions that are necessary, but not this year.
Let's discuss a second about potential solutions. As you know, we started the budget with a $2 million challenge. Uh, we identified, uh, what we thought was about $992,000 worth of, uh, recommendations I could give you. Uh, after recalculating, it's actually up by 30,000, and I'll explain that. But what I'd like to do is walk through each of these, uh, and see if you are supportive or if you say no to it. Uh, first of all, uh, if you would like to have a tax increase, please speak up now.
I have a question, a clarification. Your recommendations, uh, for not funding certain things, that budget total reflects your recommendations?
Yes, sir, it does.
Okay.
The things that are involved are things I would recommend to you. Things that are not involved would be things I would not recommend to you at this time. So, for example, the recreation fee increase. I know that in conversations with Mr. Bittner and the mayor, uh, that they've had concerns with that. Uh, I'm not overly concerned with, uh, if you decide that you don't want to pass those increases along, uh, 40,000 is not gonna break the bank. It just means that that's money that comes out of the general fund reserve. The total at the top, though, assumes that you are going to agree on all of these items, but that doesn't mean you have to, cause obviously, I'm your advisor and, and you're the final decision-maker. So, let's take them from the top. $40,000 increase in recreation fees, that's basically a five or $10 fee increase for everything from before and after school, all the way through parks and recreation fees. How's your feeling on that?
I'm gonna vote against.
I'm against.
I think, I think cost of business has gone up, Pete, for those. I, I think that's a, a nominal increase to cover in, in, increased cost of business.
Mayor, you wanna call for a question on that one?
Yeah, we better take a, take a little hand, show the hands on the, on the recreation fee increase. All those in favor?
Mayor? I think for the record, Mayor, you probably need to ask for those opposed, and then you're gonna...
Who's opposed? Okay. Okay, and I'm opposed, so that kinda takes that off the table. Okay. All right, so with the planning fee increase?
Planning fee increases, uh, as you, uh, may have seen in your review of the actual budget, uh, fee schedule, uh, those are nominal fees, but primarily, they're increases in areas that we have, uh, found in the past that we give, uh, customer service, but we don't charge for it. Now, those are going to be things, Ryan? Can you step back up?
Sure.
And if you have your, if you have your book, uh, the plan would be, at the very end of the book, you will see, see your fee schedules, and if you will look at page 22, and, so you wanna walk through?
Yeah, on page 22, uh, you see there is a driveway permit, floodplain permit. Those would be two, two new fees added that we do process. There's not a lot of them, but we are spending staff time, more than $50 worth, I can assure you.
Which one?
The, the driveway and floodplain development permit on page 22. And the second part is the, the zoning permit and the zone, standard zoning certification letters. We get a lot of requests from attorneys and, uh, finance companies that need information on, is there open code violations? Is there, uh, what's the zoning of the property? Can, is it conforming, non-conforming? And that takes staff time. Sometimes there's multiple departments that they have to, you know, be involved with. So, we're proposing to, to add those fees, and one of the biggest ones is with the zoning permit. Back in 2014, when we adopted Unified Development Ordinance, council didn't wanna add that $50 fee for something that's already going through the building permit process. So, the fee's already there. We're proposing to start charging for the zoning review, like a lot of municipalities do. You get a zoning permit, get a building permit, they're two standalone permits. We would charge the $50 fee for the zoning side that we haven't been charging since we adopted the UDO in 2014.
All right, so up or down on the, uh, planning fee increase?
I'm good.
Okay, that's the majority.
Okay, thank you.
The next is my commitment that we will reduce city operations, and although it shows 180 to 250, my commitment is $250,000. Now, I cannot identify at this point a specific point, but, uh, primarily, this is going to come from, uh, jobs that become available and that we will hold for a while. I'll give you one example that Wally has already, uh, Mr. Hanson has already come forward with. As you know, we have two engineers. Both of those slots are vacant, and in the very, very near future, we'll be introducing to you the new city engineer. But the second engineering position, because we are really, uh, into a capital improvement year where we're not going to be doing potentially a lot of, uh, items, then we're going to be holding that position open for the whole year. We're not giving up the position, but we certainly will freeze all of that money. That alone will generate about half of the $250,000. But my commitment to you is that we will help balance the budget this year by city operations being reduced by $250,000. I'm assuming you're all good with that.
All right, good, that's good. Good?
Uh, reduction in contributions. As you know, the city contributes to nonprofits in two fashions. You contribute through the general fund, you also contribute through community development. What we're proposing is that currently, community development contributes 30,000, and general fund 50,000. We're proposing that you reduce the general fund to 20,000, and that you increase community development by 30,000 up to a total of 60. Now, let me be very clear. While it sounds like everything is coming out equal, you need to be aware, some of the programs which you fund through the city are not eligible for funding through Community Development Block grant. In looking at this, we believe that you will still be able to fund those programs, and I'll give you an example. Peers is a good example. They really help the police department by assisting. But, uh, at the end of the day, uh, we would recommend that you reduce your contribution there to $30,000, where we understand that community development goes up to 60.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
As you know, for paving roads or for other things, uh, including transit subsidies, you can add a $5 up to $25 auto tag, tax. Uh, we don't believe that this is the year for that. We hope that we're going to get some relief from the legislature that would help us with paving roads. I don't know that $125,000 is going to really address our road issues. If you were going to add the $5, then I would recommend that it go to offset some of the transit subsidy. But again, at this time, I'm not recommending that. If you would like to do that, please let us know.
Anybody?
Residential garbage fees. As you have seen earlier, we subsidize, the, the general fund subsidizes the residential garbage by the tune of about $1.6 million. For every $5 that you add, you can pick up $682,000. So, in this case, uh, that is almost the equivalent of three, of two cents of tax. This particular year, uh, if you agree with funding the, the 800 megahertz out of the four cents, then I could recommend to you that you not increase the rec, the garbage fees this year. On the other hand, if you're not going to support the use of the four cent fund for the 800 megahertz, then it leaves us with a substantial issue that we'll have to decide, are you going to take that money out of the general fund balance, or are you going to find it in other ways? So, in this one, I'm actually asking for, I'll call it a double vote. Are you in favor of using the four cent fund and not in favor of raising garbage fees?
What did we increase last year on it? Recycling was it, or garbage?
We have not, we have not increased the fees on either of those for about five years. We had back-to-back years, uh, when, if you remember when the county, um, changed the sales tax method, we were scrambling to fill that $2.4 million hole, and we increased the residential garbage fees back-to-back. So, the, currently, customers, city residents are paying $10 to the city for residential garbage, and $5 basically to cover landfill costs.
That 682 is $5?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Have we thought about a, uh, instituting a parcel of $1, $2 might be a... I know, I know there's been some concern about using the four cents, all of the four cent fund, but, but a compromise be, might be a dollar or two on the garbage side, and if you wanna, then you could back off the four cents fund a little bit.
Well, my simple math, which Gil is gonna laugh at, for every penny, you're getting somewhere around, what, $130,000? Am I close horseshoes there? So, you know, if you did wanna do a dollar, $2, $3, it could be incremental.
We're already, we're already increasing the water rates.
A dollar, $1.82, yeah.
I mean, so that's, that's an increase they're gonna see on the water bill to begin with. The garbage fee is regressive. I mean, everybody pays the same, but a single person doesn't use it as much as a family of five. So, that's a non-plus to me, it's a progressive tax. Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with the four cent fund going for a couple of years. I mean, I thought about it in the past as a way to provide relief to the taxpayers. It's a lot of money, we've done a lot of good things, but who knows that we have to keep doing year after year?
And the other thing to remember too, is it's only for three years, isn't it?
Right. Right. And so, the finite thing...
I'm, I'm, I agree with Randy.
Okay.
I mean, if we're using, uh, if we're using the four cent fund, we're doing good things with it. We're just paying off, but we're, you know, we, we've, uh, helped pay the, the, uh, the communication service that, that we so desperately need, and we relied on very heavily during the last storm. So, I'm okay with using the four cent fund. I just was offering that, cause I knew there was some, 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 you know, some issues with some, with a couple of folks, but I'm fine using all four cent fund.
Who wants to use the four cent fund? That's unanimous. Who wants to increase the garbage fee?
The fee schedule, it's difficult to put on slides all of the changes in fee schedules. So, what I'd like to do for the next few minutes before we come to the six o'clock hour, is ask if you would turn in your, uh, book or on your iPad, pardon, at the very back of the, of the budget book, you will find the fee schedules, and that's, you know, they begin, uh, obviously with page one. The first change in community engagement, if you look at page five. The homeowners' education program, and the homeownership program, and the residential rehab program, we're recommending modest increases from 10 to 20, 25 to 35, 25 to 35 on those three. And on code enforcement, public nuisance abatement and minimum housing boardings, uh, contractor costs plus $200. Now, what is that? When we have to go out and abate a nuisance... When we have to go out and abate a nuisance and board it up, we currently charge simply the lien on the property is the cost of the contractor's time and material. So if they have to board up, you know, buy three sheets of plywood and board things up, the contractor is paid, the plywood is paid for, but we're not charging anything beyond that. We'd like to add a $200 administrative fee. So it will become the cost of the boarding materials and labor as well as $200 administration fee. That doesn't occur very often, but I will say to you, because of the hurricane, we've had a number of these this year, and that's why we recommend it. Interpretation appeal from enforcement action of the city code, board of adjustments. If you'll notice, the $300 fee has an asterisk. If the applicant's appeal is granted by the board, this fee will be refunded. So what we're saying is that if you want to go to the board adjustments and appeals, you can. If you lose, you're going to pay the $300. If you win, then we'll return the $300. So how do you feel about those under community engagement?
So currently, there's no fee to go to the board of adjustment?
Other than the advertising fee.
And nobody does it anyway, right? When's the last time you met?
About a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, it was? Oh, sorry.
That was just for reorganization. I'm, I'm fine.
Yep.
And the $200, we already charge that for high grass.
We do.
Right, sir?
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
What are we talking about? $2,000, $3,000? But I guess there's a little bit else, it's all right.
Fiber optics, if you look at page nine. Modest changes simply because of the cost of the fiber optics cable, going from $1.10 to $1.15 and so forth down the line. Any issues there?
No.
Fire inspections, this is going to take a while, so let's just jump that and come back after the public hearing. Page 22 was the planning fees, which you have already covered. Page 25, our building permit inspection fees. And actually, you have to turn all the way to page 29 to see the changes there. One of the things that you'll notice on page 29, the refunds. We're adding that the refund shall be requested prior to the end of the fiscal year the permit was issued and/or within 180 days, whichever is less. Now, it sounds odd, but one of the accounting problems we have is when you get a permit issued and it's in one fiscal year, but you want your refund in another fiscal year, it gives us some accounting problems. So that's something that is really, I think, important. At the bottom of that, by action of the city council, and this is related to the past storm. By action of the city council, permit fees may be waived for storm-related repairs. However, permits will still be required. Failure to obtain permits will result in the fee waiver being voided, and the penalty of double fees shall apply. We did not have this language when we had to deal with Florence. So I think you can see why we have that. Any other thoughts on building permits before we stop for the public hearing? Well, we have seven minutes, so it's not six o'clock yet. City attorney says keep going. On recreation fees, you have taken care of those by your former vote. Sanitation, page 41. If you look at page 42, the $90 per pickup on sanitation, cleanup and hauling, we did not realize that we did not have anything in there about the disposal cost. So we're going to charge you $90 to come out and pick it up. But when we take it to the landfill, sometimes the things that are in that truck weigh a ton, sometimes three or four tons. So what we found is that we weren't able to actually technically charge people for the landfill tonnage fee. So whatever, let's say that the, I've forgotten what the previous slide showed, that they, what's it, a ton?
$49.
$49. So if you've got $90 pickup and three tons, and you owe us $147 plus the nine, I'm not sure.
So what is this sanitation pickup? I don't understand, it's just where they are.
Jerry, explain what the sanitation pickup is.
Hey, now, what we're talking about in the fee schedule is related to the storm. And what we found, that when we were going out and picking up material, it, we used the boom truck and we used personnel to do that. And what we're trying to do is recruit some of that expense, and that's why you get the $90 charge, that's why we're charging the $90 for that. We had a couple of times during the storm where we had the other situation and we shorted the city considerable money. And we were trying to make a balance of this and make it work, going out and picking that material up with a special, special kind of equipment.
And now, that's, that's in addition or separate from what the contractor's picking up?
Yeah, and I want to just, this is for commercial entities and not residential entities. Okay?
Transit, page 46. We've already approved these fees, but you can see that this is now reflected in the reduced fare ID card and the one transit per trip. Any issues there? Water and sewer is scheduled A and B, that's 51 and several pages after that. These are to reflect the new cost based upon the study that was done for development fees.
I think this is actually a 2.25% increase from the rate model.
From the rate model, okay. And those are all the fees other than fire, and we'll come back to them in just a minute.
5:50, 5:50.
Fire department, why don't you all come up and we'll cover as many of those fees as we can. Fire inspections are page 11. Starting on page 11, fire inspection fees, please.
Okay, so we start with fire protection system permit inspections. What we're seeing a lot of times, this is for your fire alarm construction, your sprinkler system construction. Contractors are calling for permits without really making sure the job is completed or making sure everything's been troubleshoot. So we'll send personnel out there to do the inspection, and they're not ready. So it's really a wasted trip. By adding a $50 fee for subsequent inspections, it'll give them more incentive to make sure the systems have been troubleshoot and tested before they call for that final inspection. It encourages them to be ready for us wasting man hours, wasting fuel to go out there for somebody that's really not ready for the inspection. The next will be after-hours inspections. The first one's for special events. We're getting more and more operational permits for carnivals, fairs, festivals that need inspections on Saturdays. This causes us to incur overtime expenses for our inspectors to come in on Saturdays and Sundays and inspect these events. So a special event fee of $80 would help offset some of that. And construction inspections are the same way. We have jobs that, they'll call for spec, they'll get in the bind at the end and they'll want special inspections on Saturdays or Sundays, try to get open by Monday. Our inspectors are Monday through Friday employees, so there's an overtime fee incurred in those inspections, and that $50 per hour would help offset some of those overtime costs. And then when we get down to fire protection plan to view systems, we adjusted the square footage this year to kind of give a wider range for contractors to know where their jobs are going to fall into. And we actually lowered the cost for some of the, some of the fees to make, to encourage more development here within the city and for an opposite cost prohibitive as far as fire protection systems. And we're not seeing as many of the larger 50,000 square foot and above. So we kind of adjusted that, because before, for $325, you were looking at 150,000 square foot buildings and above. We're really not seeing those, so we kind of reduced that square footage and made the fees kind of reflective of that. And then when we turn over to page 12, we have never really had a defined citation schedule in the past. It's something that we've asked for, but we've not gotten. We get calls periodically for our nightclubs, our bars, our assemblies in the evening time that they're overcrowded. Presently, we don't have an approved fee schedule to write citations. So if we go out and you're overcrowded, they may send some people out, we leave, they send them back in. We don't have any enforcement behind that because there's no defined fee we can add to that. So for overcrowding, we're asking for a $100 fee. If they're one to five person over their posted occupant load, then after that, it'd be $100 for every person above five that are overcrowded. That would give us some better enforcement ability when we go out to these overcrowded establishments and help us be able to enforce some safety regulations. Life safety violations, this is when we go out to a nightclub or a bar or something like that, and they have a fire alarm system and it's out of service. Basically, right now, we go out and find it, we just put them on the 30-day inspection schedule. This would give us some fee, some fees to kind of put some bite behind it and say, this is here for a reason, it needs to be up and working. All other safety violations would be $100. That would be things that are a little less minor, a little less more severe, like emergency lights that are out, things like that. And working without a permit, we come across these quite often. We'll come across contractors that are doing work before they've submitted plans for approval or gone through the permitting process. And this $500 would kind of give us some enforcement and make people want to comply with the city and state rules and regulations. And open burning, this is something we're coming across more and more often. We run these calls many, many times a month where people are burning trash versus using the city's trash pickup. First violation would be a warning. After that, would be $250 and $500 for the third violation within a calendar year. Is what we're looking at. Because it costs a lot of money to send a fire truck down the road for people that are, that are burning trash, so.
How do you feel about these?
I, we didn't talk about the false alarm fees.
False alarm fees, that is...
Change in your...
Okay, right there. This is kind of the same thing that we're seeing as far as the others is, we're getting more and more businesses are coming out, getting their fire alarms or fire sprinkler systems tested, not putting them in test mode. So we're running more and more false alarms. Our justice complex, they have prisoners that are busting sprinkler heads left and right. We're running two or three calls a week over there for prisoners busting sprinkler heads. And this would allow us to not fine them, but give them a little bit more fees to encourage them to get their systems repaired and keep them in a operable state.
So they're red and crossed out, does that mean they were proposed?
They weren't, they, we presently have for the third alarm is $50, fourth alarm 75, fifth is $100. At those fees, we're not really seeing the business owners taking that extra responsibility to prevent us from running all these false alarms.
Yeah, this stricken means that's the current fee. The number of the cited is the new fee.
What we're proposing, yes. And what I meant by putting the system in test mode, whenever they're going to put it in, whenever they're going to do an annual test on the system, they call their monitoring company and have them not send the emergency alarm to the fire department whenever they're testing. And that's not happening in a lot of cases. So we're receiving the signal thinking it's an emergency, and we respond when really, in fact, it's not. They just didn't do their due regard and put their system in test mode.
This is just for the fire department? This fee is not related to the police?
That's just for fire department, just for fire.
On the next thing, you talked about with the citation. So you would issue a ticket, so would there be a court proceeding before they were thing? Or you judge and jury?
Basically, we write the citation, they have the ability to appeal if they like. If they choose, they basically come in to us and talk about it. A lot of times, we, we do work with them on that if there's a reasonable reason for why it occurred. They sit down with myself and the fire chief and we, we work with the community. But as far as overcrowding, all assemblies have a posted occupant load.
What do you do if they say, no, I'm not going to pay this?
I believe it goes to water billing, it comes out in their, in their water bill. If they don't, if they don't pay it for that.
And it sounds like from the example you gave, there needs to be a communication between city and county in reference to the judge.
Yeah, I think we want to start sending in bills. And the work without a permit, that was, that was proposed last year and not accepted, I remember. Is that right?
Actually, I don't remember whether that was...
Yeah, I remember that. I don't know, what do you think about that, Bob? It doesn't... What's your leverage on someone to just, they can just leave town and quit working or whatever?
We issue a stop work order. When we find out about it, we issue a stop work order, and then they come in. You know, one thing I don't, I know in building permits, when they work without a permit and we issue a stop work order, then the fee is actually doubled.
I would think this would be, they can fall in the same category, I think. They didn't get a, they didn't get a sprinkler permit. It ought to be, that's a violation of the building code, that's a building code violation. That ought to be doubled, whatever the state law allows us to do there.
Well, what you're saying is that particular applicant didn't, maybe somehow they didn't know that they needed a sprinkler system. You'll work with them in terms of at least appealing it or... I mean, they'll win, but you, there is a process of appeal.
Yes.
To have that come.
With building, what we do is, we have a list. And if you come in, you didn't realize the permit was needed, we put you on the list and say, next time, we will double the fee. So we, we give everybody one strike and we jot down their name in case they didn't know that it was required.
The majority of the time, we'll work with the same contractor, sprinkler and alarm, so.
If you're issuing a citation and they refuse to pay, you're going to put it on the water bill. What if they don't own the bill, building?
I mean, I'd have to look and get an answer for that, we don't have an answer for that.
And then the work without a permit, is, is that the person doing the work or the person that owns the property?
That would go on the person that is doing the work, sir. We write the citation on the person doing the work.
So it would be a property owner or contractor, basically, depends on...
Depending on the situation.
Yes.
Well, John, how would you handle it?
We would have to look into it a little bit further to see exactly how it should be handled and what kind of protocol that we would have to set up to handle, unless there's something in place already, which I'm not aware of. And I'd have to check with Sean, Chief Harrison.
How about if we agree that the citation component of this will be held? You're not approving that, but any of the others you're uncomfortable with?
I'm okay.
So citations are on hold, we'll clarify that.
It might be a good time to interrupt.
Glenn, if you'll move us now to the public hearing slides, please.
Okay, at this time, we'll recess the regular meeting and open the public hearing on budget.
City council began the workshops on April the 2nd and held a number of sessions. Our goal is to have the proposed budget adopted no later than June 30th, hopefully on June the 4th. Historically, the city revenues are based upon the tax rate. We know that over time, the tax rate has had to change. But as you can see on this chart, the last time the tax rate changed was in FY '15. So you've had one, two, three, four, five, potentially six.
Good evening.
You've had six sessions where you have not raised the property tax. You'll also recall that in FY '14 to FY '15, that tax increase was because of the change in the sales tax distribution method.
Revaluation.
Well, primarily though, that was because of, that year was because of the sales tax. Now, you, in, in revaluation years, for example, last year, you did not vote to go to the, what was the term?
Revenue neutral rate.
You chose to keep the rate at 64.2.
To go to revenue neutral, it was about a penny difference, as I recall.
In your FY '19 budget, you have 563 full-time positions, five part-time benefited and 79 part-time non-benefited. That's the same recommendation for FY '20. When it comes to the budget summaries, you will see that the general fund is ad valorem tax and sales tax heavy. That's where you get your revenues. You can see the comparison from FY '19 to FY '20. You will notice that the ad valorem taxes are down. We have discussed that before, and that is because, I know I'm phoning a friend there too. But the ad valorem tax is actually down because of the $80 million that is taken off the tax rolls from the tax base because of hurricane Florence. Sales tax is also down. That is because of the $450,000 that you lost when the county raised their taxes last year about three cents. That had a, I think, an unintended consequence, but it results... That had, I think, an unintended consequence, but it results in the county getting more sales tax and the city receiving less. You can see the other funds and charges that are there. Total expenditures by fund, you can see the general fund, water and sewer, solid waste, and stormwater. Now, these numbers go up and down primarily because of capital projects. So when you look at water and sewer, yes, it's down by four million dollars, but that's because of the capital projects that you're doing versus capital projects you did this past year. Same thing with stormwater. Why is it up eight hundred thousand? It's because of capital projects. When it comes to the revenue projections, again, I remind you that the general fund primarily operates off of these two items. And you can see that as we look at the tax base this year, you are down by roughly six hundred thousand dollars. Funding city government, if you look, from the property tax, police and fire are where we fund city government, the general fund. Transfers to solid waste. All other portions of the city government are funded through other sources. And I'm sure somebody can say, well, you could have funded police through the sales tax, which is true. But it's been the policy of the city council that the tax dollar goes first to police and fire and solid waste. Again, when you look at the property tax from the standpoint of the pie chart, sixty-seven percent goes to police. Actually, we don't have a percent for fire and two percent for transfer to solid waste. So that means sixty-nine percent, so that leaves thirty-one percent.
Sure.
Had to pull that one out of the...
He is quick.
With that, Mayor and Council, that's the overview of your budget. I'll remind you, you have to adopt it no later than June the thirtieth. At this point, you may want to open for the public any comments that they want to make.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak as to the budget?
We have one gentleman came in.
If you please come up to the podium up there, please.
I have to go to the podium?
Yes, sir. Oh. We'll be able to hear you on the radio, on the...
TV if you don't.
I don't want to be on TV.
You're not going to be.
Do I have to raise my hand or anything?
Yes, sir. Just please state your name and address.
My name is Timothy Solom. I live on one hundred Keller Court, right downtown here in Jacksonville. I was looking at, I have not seen the full budget. I saw something that kind of alarmed me. Considering recreation, and I have nothing against recreation, I used to work for recreation. I'm seeing that they want to spend three hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a splash pad. If that's not a need, that needs to go. It can wait for another year. We have two in the city right now, I believe. We have one at Amia, one at Northeast Creek, and numerous times I've been by those places in the summertime, there's been nobody there, so I don't understand the need for putting another splash pad down there. Well, where is it? Your district in the commons, if I believe that's where it's going. No need. A need is, if it's a need, put it in. If it's not, don't. Improvements, I don't have a budget. I was looking on my cellphone and I apologize, I'm not prepared, I didn't make up. A hundred thousand dollars for playground improvements. Why don't we just fix what we have? What do you need to purchase? What is there that needs a hundred thousand dollars worth of improvements? That's what I'm looking at. They haven't even done any repairs down in Sturgis yet that I've seen over the boards I've been tripping on for the last year or two. We're still looking at that. I was told there was going to be fifteen thousand dollars every budget year towards the repair of that. I walked down in Sturgis and I seen a couple of boards replaced, but that's it. You need more than a couple of boards. You need total sections redone, removed, replaced. There's still no alligator signs down there either. We have alligators. I can show you the pictures of the gators down there. We have no signs down there. You have walks that are sinking. They have orange paint so to make sure you don't trip. These are things, the existing problems need to be fixed and they're not being fixed. And that's what needs to come first. These wants, these are just pipe dreams right now. And when we have a two million dollar shortage and we're trying to figure out how to get that back, there's better ways than adding more and spending more on things that aren't need fixed. What we have, the improvements, or they can wait. They can wait for a while. They don't need to be done. We have planned recreation. You have Camp Blasun has theirs and the base, they have everything they need. We have plenty here in Jacksonville. We don't need more right now. We need to fix what we have. I currently have, they had to dig up a pipe on my property. I'm still waiting for that to be taken care of and restored back to its, the way it was. It's not. It's been about three or four months now. And I'm told, well, we don't have the money right now. You don't have the money to fix my yard, but you have money for other things? That's not good stuff. We need to be wise in how we spend our money. And for wants, it's not a good thing. I'm against these, the recreational things, I just, I'm not, I love recreation, but what we have can be fixed. I used to work for recreation and we used to do a lot of fixing and we didn't get a lot of things. And Mike's done a great job getting things, but right now is not the time. We don't need it, so let's not do it. We've got many other things needing to be done. And we have a lot of dilapidated property in Jacksonville, too. A lot of dilapidated property. I sit in an area, I wish code enforcement would really get on the ball and maybe start hitting up owners. We're buying a property, I believe I read in Myrtlewood Circle. Why? Why are we buying a property? I've never, I don't understand that. I wish someone could explain the buying of property up. Can anybody? I read it the other day, thirty-six thousand they spent on a unit or two. I don't understand it. I'd like to know more about that, too, and I'll get, start investigating a little bit more when I get a little more involved here. I appreciate you letting me talk. I hope you listen to wisdom. I'm not saying I have wisdom, but look at wisdom because wisdom builds a house. And if you don't lose wisdom, that house is going to crash. Thank you.
Thanks for coming and talking with us. Appreciate it.
Mayor, Tim, if you would get with Wally Hansen for a minute, and wherever we dug up a pipe, we need to find out why your yard hasn't been fixed, so if the two of you would get with that. Mayor, anyone else to speak?
Anyone else here to speak about the budget? Seeing no one take them, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing on the budget. And I guess we will recess for a few minutes.
Let's recess for ten minutes.
Okay, we're back in session. Dr. Lou.
Going back, the one additional item in the T-Schedule that we wanted to review with you is the fire prevention schedule. You'll find that on page 13.
The only real changes in this section, counsel, is the code verbiage changes. We just adopted the 2018 North Carolina Fire Prevention Code, which is the 2015 ICC with North Carolina revisions. So all the reds you see here is just the code verbiage changes for what requires a permit. The only monetary changes that were made fall under the fire sprinkler system or fire alarm changes.
And that's on page 16.
It's on 16 and then on 17 for the fire alarms. What we currently have is a one flat $125 permit fee, whether you build a 500-square-foot building or a 500,000-square-foot building, it's one fee. What we're proposing here is a fee based upon square footage, where if you build something 50,000 square feet or less, it's 125. 50,000 and 1, 75 goes to 250, and it goes up from there, as opposed to someone that's building a mall versus a small strip shop parcel paying the exact same as reflected in what you're building. And this is consistent with what other fire departments in our area are charging and how their methodology. Those, that's the only changes in this, in this section.
Any questions? I think if you're ready, we will get into your capital improvement plan.
I had a question on the temporary membrane, if you don't mind.
Under which?
Under fire temporary membrane. I'm sorry.
Were we under temporary membrane?
We weren't charging those fees before, but we are now, right?
We were charging those before. That is a formatting error. The only red here should have been the verbiage, not the cost. The cost was $60 for something less than 3,000 and 125 or something greater. And that's basically based on your tents for festivals and large events versus your circus tents is how that's set up. Those should have been in black because there's no changes. That's currently what we're charging. We're not proposing any fee changes to the tents and membrane structure.
I just want to make sure because we've spent a lot of money trying to promote festivals and events. I didn't know if that was just a new additional fee.
No, sir. It's consistent with what the president charged.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
I think you can see from the level of knowledge that Sean has that the up-and-coming leadership in the fire department is very capable. I think that young man and Italian chiefs and so forth are doing an excellent job in leading the fire department. Next thing we'd like to do is spend a moment talking about your capital improvement plan. We have two of our excellent young people that are going to be walking you through that, Talia and Andrew, so please.
Thank you. Mayor, members of council, thank you for having us again. Tonight, we want to talk about a capital improvement plan. It's been a while since we touched base. You were provided the proposed book back in mid-March. So we want to again meet up to give you an overview of the CIP, talk about some of the proposed changes. Look at how that affects the expenditures and some of the funding sources, and then have time for questions and comments if necessary. So looking at the overview again, so our capital improvement plan, these are projects that are major. They exceed $50,000 in cost. They require over 12 months to build and to complete, and then have a useful life of over five years. And this is our plan, so this is going to allow us to financially plan as well as keep us accountable. We're able to monitor our projects and prioritize as necessary. And so moving forward in the proposed changes, these are things that we have seen and we have discussed throughout the budget process. And so first, we look at some schedule adjustments. These three projects are currently in FY '20. We have the playground improvement at Jacksonville Commons, the playground improvement at Brook Valley, and also the common splash pad. These all are currently funded out of the Capital Reserve, and so we are proposing to shift these either to FY '20 or further out, which will free up about anywhere, just over Just over $500,000 that can be utilized elsewhere. Some other changes that we are looking into are with the NC DOT projects, which we have updated here and there. So currently, what you see in the proposed CIP at FY '20 of about $4 million, and then FY '20 through FY '29, just about, just over $8 million. And so the proposed, these are changes that have come as we get closer and we get more involved in these projects, just some revisions. And also some information that we have found out about matching with DOT, which have caused us to decrease significantly. And how this affects our expenditures and our funding. So for FY '20 expenditures, so we see in bold the changes. So NC DOT, we still have the same number of projects. We'll still see seven projects in the CIP. But like we had just discussed, that's down from just about $4 million to 1.3. With recreation and parks, we originally had eight projects coming in FY '20 with removing the two playgrounds and the common splash pad. We're down to five projects and dropping from 2 million down to about 1.5. And so overall, we'll see 45 total projects instead of 48, and a revised total cost of about $24 million.
On the park and recreation, the $1.4 million is primarily a holding number relative to what's going to happen to Jack and Yet. As you know, Susan and the recreation staff did an excellent job of coming up with a survey. They have finished the survey, had over 400 responses, and that will be presented to you in coming weeks. From that, we will be asking you to give us guidance as to what you want to do with Jack and Yet. I can assure you that the insurance money that we hope to get of roughly, let's say, $1.25 million is not going to be sufficient for what you're going to be looking at with rebuilding Jack and Yet. So when you look at that number, as the gentleman mentioned very, I think correctly in the public hearing, the public should realize that the vast majority of that $1.4 million has to do with what are you going to do with Jack and Yet. And again, it will be probably late FY '20 during the fiscal year by the time we finish all the concepts and you finish all the discussions as to where you want to go. And probably Jack and Yet will not be operational in its rebuilt or redesigned fashion for at least two to three years. But I did want to explain that, especially given the gentleman who spoke at the public hearing, that we're, that is one major project that we're looking at and storm related.
Looking at an overview of the CIP all 10 years, you'll notice none of the project counts changed just because we shifted those three projects. They still appear in the CIP. And so we see the NC DOT, the total cost, as we mentioned prior, changed to about $4.3 million, and that affects our overall total as well.
And I would remind you that by state law, we no longer have a five-year capital improvement plan, but we have a 10-year capital improvement plan. That was because of the issue relative to system development fees. That's the fee that is charged for water and sewer connections. But when you have a capital improvement program for 10 years for water and sewer, you might as well have a 10-year capital improvement for all other, everything from fire stations to recreation to sidewalk improvements.
How this affects the funding for the overall CIP for the 10-year span. Our NC DOT projects are water and sewer. They are utility-related, so that is the total cost which is affected here prior. And what you see in your proposed book, it was just over 36 million. It has dropped to 34, almost 35 million. And so that is the only change for the funding sources here. So moving forward, we suggest shifting more projects than what was proposed if we need additional meetings, but the CIP will also be adopted with the budget by June 30.
And it also reminds you that when you adopt the capital improvement program, you're only adopting one year. You're not locking in the actual programs or guaranteeing the funding or the building of that project in a particular year other than for the fiscal year, which is coming up, which is FY '20.
So are those three projects being moved in your first slide, which has the splash pad and all that, you're moving those to '21?
Currently, they'll be moved to '21, and the reason why is because while we are recommending to you that the 4-cent reserve be utilized for the 800 megahertz. Remember, we adopt the budget one year at a time. So next year, the same question will be asked. Do you want to fund the 800 megahertz out of the 4-cent reserve? If you do, you may decide you want to build these projects anyway, or you may decide those projects are going to slide back another year. Any other questions on capital improvement? Talia has done an excellent job. She and Andrew, Andrew is the, I guess the best thing to say, he is our, our project builder. And Andrew has done a great job talking about projects. Anthony mentioned to me just a minute ago some very good news. So Anthony, where are you? Would you mind stepping up a moment and standing at my shoulder if you don't mind? Give him the good news about a capital project that is a real interesting.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Carolina Forest Boulevard has been on our mind for a long time now, particularly since the weather, was it last winter or two winters ago? Two winters ago, that really deteriorated the surface out there on the roadway. So we, as you recall, we partnered with DOT because we had a really hard time issuing a contract competitively and getting good bid pricing back. We partnered with DOT. They actually went out there with their contractor and did the work for us. They finished it today. And the funding that was provided to us by Representative Shepard through the state budget is actually going to go to pay for all of that work.
Great work.
Did we end up with any overdues that you're aware of?
We haven't gotten the final report yet, but it's going to be very close, basically.
Theoretically, we're going to pay for all that work with that money, but.
Good work.
Good work. I'd also like to ask Deanna Tripple to step up a moment and give you a quick update on the Sturgeon City Building. Why don't you stand next to the mayor and council?
Good evening. We actually are in the very last few days of hopefully getting substantial completion on the Sturgeon City Civic Center or Educational Center. And we're pretty excited. We're, as most of you know, when you're building a house, we're in those finishing details, and so that's kind of what we're focusing on, but we're super excited. So hopefully, we'll be able to do maybe a tour with council in the upcoming weeks. I know that media in Sturgeon City are working together on putting together some type of opening dedication ceremony as they, in typical fashion, not just a ribbon-cutting ceremony. So we're super excited and can't wait to show off the new building.
Anything else you two have on capital projects? Thank you very much. Two items that we still have that are pending. One is the fire step plan, and the other is general compensation for the employees. We've been working with human resources and with public safety, both Mike and with Jerry and his team, and we've been looking at the fire step plan. We want to give you the concept tonight. We're not actually going to ask you to vote up or down, unless you just want to vote it down. That's up to you. But the, the step plan is similar in certain ways to the police department plan. Who would be included in it? It would be trainees, firefighters one, two, three, and driver operators one. Who would not be in the plan? Driver operators two, captains, assistant battalion chiefs, battalion chiefs, fire marshals, and of course, the chief. There is some new language that is, that has entered the fire industry. And we used to call them firefighter ones, twos, and threes, but we no longer, while Jacksonville still does that, and operator ones and twos, the industry is really going to some new names. So part of the concept would be, instead of having a pay grade for firefighter one, a pay grade for firefighter two, a pay grade for firefighter three, a pay grade for driver operator one, a pay grade for operator two. All of the firefighter would be merged into one pay grade. They'd be called firefighters. The driver operator one would become the engineer, and the operator two would become the lieutenant. Now, part of the reason for this, and chief, why don't Mike, you and Jerry fill in mine, come join me on this. Part of it is what is the responsibility of the fire call? The engineer is basically the operator of the vehicle, while when operator two is there, he's actually the scene commander, so that's why he's now called a lieutenant. In the concept, well, first of all, let me ask you this. Have I correctly described the concept that you're proposing of merging the firefighter ones, twos, and threes into firefighters and so forth?
Yes, sir.
And do you want to explain further why operator one is becoming an engineer and so forth?
It's just a title change, basically, and that we will lump them into different, the step plan, basically.
Now, the firefighter step plan, remember that's one, two, and three. They all become just firefighter. Would start at 33.5 and would go up to 38.5 and be capped. If you look at the current plan for the city, you actually, remember, you have steps for firefighter one, firefighter two, firefighter three. So they're spread over a number of pay grades. So the current plan So the current plan would allow a firefighter to enter at 31.8 and go all the way up to The Step Plan would enter at 33.5 and then cap at 38.5. Many times when you listen to the federal budget discussions, you'll hear the Office of Management and Budget or one of the other analysts up there say that over a 10-year period, you're going to save such and such and such and such. That's one of the ways you have to look at this. There is a cost to implement the plan, but because the cap is now there, you're actually going to have some long-term savings. For example, it will cost you, as you'll see in a few minutes, a lot of money to implement the plan. But once a firefighter gets to year five, if they haven't qualified to move on, their salary is capped. What they get is a bonus. Let's say for discussion purposes, in your current pay plan, a person is given a, let's say that when you talk about compensation, you say we're going to give a 1%, 2% or $1,000 increase for every employee. That goes to the base salary. Under the police plan and under the proposed fire plan, once you reach the cap, either you move to the next level or your salary is frozen. You will get the bonus for cost of living. So let's use the $1,000 as an example. Let's say that you pass on to all employees $1,000, and you are capped at 38.5 as a firefighter. So you'll be paid 38.5, and you'll get a check for $1,000. Next year, your salary is still 38.5, and you'll get a check for whatever, let's say, another $1,000. The current plan doesn't penalize or incentivize anybody to move along without mentioning names, which would be inappropriate. I can tell you, we have people who are firefighter twos who haven't ever moved to firefighter threes, but they've gotten every pay increase you've ever passed on because there's no cap. There's no mandatory up or out. In our program, it's not up or out, it's upper cap. So to implement the program is going to cost you a lot of money, as you're going to see in a minute. On the other hand, the long-term savings could be there. Can't guarantee it's going to be there, but could be there. Firefighter one-twos and threes would be merged into firefighter. You can see what the scale is. Driver operator would become an engineer. You'll notice that the cap on firefighter is 38.5. The starting for the driver operator would be 42, and again, they would go up to 46 and then be capped. Currently, the spread from, for the DO1s and the DO2s is from 38.7 to almost $62,000. And in this program, you know, once again, you, you would be capped off unless you move Who is not in the Step Plan? Cost of living adjustments would continue for all of the rest of the personnel. Now, interestingly enough, and I have a note on this, let me get it out. In the Step Plan, let me start that differently. In the Fire Department, you have 88 personnel that are, that are fire officers, fire personnel. That includes the secretary.
It does, 87, one non-employee.
Okay, my apology. Okay, so you have 87. 43 people would be in the Step Plan, and I think Jerry, 47 minus 40, 87 minus 43 is still the Yankees winning over the Red Sox, right?
No.
Okay. What you're going to wind up with is you see is roughly half the department would be in the Step Plan, half the department will still be under the cost of living adjustment. So again, if you adopt the Step Plan for the firefighter and the engineer now, and it doesn't include the lieutenants and above, you're going to have roughly half the department in one, one plan, half in the other. That's not a good thing or a bad thing, it's just a statement. Remember, the same things in the Fire Department, in the Police Department. You only have certain ranks that are in the Step Plan. I believe, Mike, where does the Step Plan end?
At corporal.
At corporal. So sergeants and above are still in the cost of living and the COLA program.
That's true.
Okay, thank you. Now, you gentlemen, before we get to the next slide, which talks about money, any comments you want to make about why you think this is a step in the right direction, or if you think it's not a good idea? Although you did tell me this morning, you still think it's a good idea.
I still think it's a good idea. I mean, helpful mobility for individuals to move up in the organization, because right now, like God would say, we have some anomalies out there making a lot of money sitting in firefighter two positions, or even the engineer position, then they're making more than our driver twos, and some make more than our driver ones, because over the years, they've been able to get the pay increases, and they promoted on the right time. So we got to get some upward mobility, or we really need drivers, this is a way to move people up to engineers.
If this plan is implemented, you're still going to have those people redlined?
Yes, sir. They will not get any more at that point in time, but capped out.
Mike, any thoughts?
Well, I mean, it's been very helpful in the Police Department as far as retention, you know, for the last, we've actually, there's been a number of months where we've actually had full staff, which is the first time in a number of years by implementing that plan.
You do have some turnover in the Fire Department. You're never going to be able to compete with the base. I mean, we've just recently lost how many firefighters to the base?
None right yet. We have two in the wings right now, so.
Okay, well, we have two that are about to jump inside the fence. You're not ever going to compete with the salary range there. We do have some turnover. I think this past year, we've had about eight or nine people leave the Fire Department. Overall, though, it's a very stable workforce and certainly dedicated, and you see on a regular basis the recognition of police and fire for the things that they do that make us a safe community. Let's talk about money. To implement the plan, it is somewhere between $175,000 and $200,000. And remember, you're dealing with roughly half the force. The annual maintenance is about $80,000, because you will have people moving from one step to another. You'll also have people who move from firefighter up to engineer, and people moving from engineer on up. One of the reasons why the implementation cost is as high as it is is not because of the 43 people that will be in the plan. It's because when you set up the plan, it creates a ripple, so there will be additional increases for some of the people who are not in the plan. And of course, the actual cost of living for the people who are not in the plan, you will have to determine that. Here's a suggestion that I have on this. Gail and Human Resources, and so that's Finance and Human Resources and Public Safety, have been working on the plan. I don't know that we have thought through to the point of saying that we're ready for you to adopt it. If you are not interested in the plan, tonight would be a good night to say, we're just not interested in this, and keep them on COLA. What I would ask you to consider, though, is this. Let's, let's agree that we're going to put in the budget $200,000 in basically a holdings line, and that in August or September, when we've really had a chance to vet every number and make sure that this is exactly where we want this program to go, that we bring back to you that report, and at that time, you either say, we're going to implement the Step Plan, and we'll make the pay retroactive to July 1st for those who would have gotten it during that time, or that we're not going to implement the Step Plan, and we're going to pass on the same cost of living to the Fire Department that you would have had without the Step Plan, but again, it would be retroactive to July 1st. On the other hand, if you're comfortable saying, yes, we can support this, we need to add this to the budget. If you say, on the other hand, I'm not in favor of the Step Plan at this time, we appreciate you telling us that tonight.
What, what are you uncomfortable with?
We have to run all of the numbers to make absolutely certain
That this number's accurate.
That these numbers are the real numbers, because what I don't want to do is come back to you and say that, well, I apologize, but it's not 200,000, it's 240,000.
All right, let me ask another question then. You did the same analysis for the Police Department. Were those numbers accurate?
Yes, they were.
Have they proven to be accurate now?
They have proven to be accurate. I mean, I'm not uncomfortable with these numbers. I'm just saying that with everything that we have been doing regarding the overall budget, we haven't, I don't like this word, but I'll use it, we haven't vetted these numbers to the nth degree. And the lady that I trust the most when it comes to money, well, actually, there are two ladies I trust the most. The one that's right behind. So if, if Gail is comfortable tonight saying, these are the numbers, I'm comfortable with that. I'm not so sure that she's, you have an opinion, Ms. Maynes?
I think that the implementation number, I'm really comfortable with, the maintenance. I don't know that we've spent enough time looking at that to know that that's the number.
I'd like to see what, how this benefits the city long-term, as far as, you mentioned that a minute ago, that the long-term benefit would be there. What is that long-term benefit?
We can try to come up with some numbers for that. The long-term benefit is going to be based on, on what I'm going to call retirement.
Retirement.
Because what's going to happen is, some of the people that will be redlined in this program, if they are, let's say, five years out from retirement, then that's when you're going to move a person that's making, pick a number of $55,000 to a person who's making 33.5. So what we'd have to do, which we're glad to do, is go through and look at and project when we will have the retirement of some of the higher-paid personnel.
I think it's, I think it's hard to grasp everything you presented because of the variables, so many variables involved, especially when you said you've got implementation that's really not going, you're talking about 40 half the staff, but the implementation's going to affect the other part. And the consolidation of one, two, and three into just one is, I don't understand how that happens either. There's not going to be a firefighter one, two, or three? Then where do they get, they just say firefighter for the thing?
They're going to promote to an engineer.
So what about a guy that's a three and a one? They start?
They'll still be in the same pay band at that point in time.
Will they be paid the same? I mean, you just wipe everything out? And I don't think we've seen the dilemma that we had with the Police Department. I mean, I know you've had turnover, but it's hard to, hard to conceive that something that's going to cost this much to begin with is eventually going to cost less. I mean, that, that's, that'd take a lot of.
Well, that depends on when these people retire that are doing the analysis. That are being redlined. Well, that's pretty hard.
You're going to have that anyway. I mean, you'll have retirements anyway, with or without a Step Plan. It's not, you can't predict the total effect.
And please continue, then I'll, I'll give a comment.
Like I said, I don't think I have a full grasp of what you're saying.
Where you will have immediate savings is where a person currently qualifies for a cost of living increase, is a firefighter one, two, or three, and he gets the cost of living increase that you pass on. Under this program, once you're capped, your base salary doesn't continue to go up.
There's no COLAs.
And there's no, what you're going to get is a bonus, but again,
Who determines that?
You're not getting, you get the COLA.
You get that whole year, it just doesn't apply to your base. So it's not that big of a.
You don't get the COLA. You get a bonus equal to the COLA. Now, let me explain to you what I'm saying. The COLA is always applied to the base salary.
It keeps going up.
And it keeps going up, 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 up. The bonus.
Doesn't increase your salary.
If I'm, if I'm at $40,000 and you give a $1,000 increase as a COLA, my salary's $41,000. But if I'm capped and my salary's $40,000, I get a check for $1,000 as a bonus. Next year, my salary's still $40,000. It's not 41 plus whatever you're going to give with the cost of living.
Yeah, so all you save is like 2% of $1,000, so that's, that's going to take a lot to really get traction, I think.
I'm not sure that this program essentially is what you're saying is really a money benefit long-term. I think it's more of the same of what we did in public, in, in the Police Department, retention and pushing people to either move up the ladder or get capped out. It's more an incentive for internal, yeah, it's an internal management program within the organization rather than it is going to be cost savings for us.
But is there truly open-ended opportunity? I mean, could everybody push to the top? I mean, without, I don't understand that either, you know, how can?
No, you can't make, well, they allocate so many positions for drivers, so you allocated 36 positions for lieutenants and engineers. Now, after that, we're allocated 15, 12 positions for company officers, so that'll be the retirement. So at some point in time, you make it lieutenant, we have, we have 36 lieutenants, and they'll all get COLA.
But again, that's the reason why we wanted to present it tonight, but the recommendation from our office, I guess you would say my recommendation, is we need to set aside some money, but I think that there is a lot more discussion that we need to have with y'all, and there's a lot more analysis that we need to have.
I'm okay with the analysis.
There are two ways you can do this. One of the reasons why I'm suggesting setting aside, setting aside a pool is if you are doing that, then you're also saying that whatever cost of living that you pass on to the general employee will not be passed on to the Fire Department personnel that potentially be in this program until you make a decision as to whether the program is going to move forward or not.
I'm pushing the can now. When would it be? August, September?
At the earliest, it would be, you know, because we, we are closing out the budget in June, we do not meet really in July, so it would be back either in late August or September. I do not want to suggest the first meeting in August because that's always the national night out meeting, and so.
Question. How is this going to affect what we've already done with the budget?
Well, what it would do is it would, in this case, it would add $200,000 that you're taking out of the general fund balance. On the other hand, remember, if you pass on a cost of living increase that applies to all of the employees, part of this number would come down or be offset by the cost of living increase. Something for you to think about.
Is everybody okay with?
I think setting aside the $200,000.
Yeah, putting the money aside in.
In lieu of them getting a COLA if they do a COLA.
And doing a rerun of the figures just to make double sure, see what you can do in terms of projecting retirements and so on, or at least the potential for retirements. We, we can ascertain that pretty quickly. We don't know when they're going to retire.
What he said.
The other issue which we'd like to provide some information on, not asking to make a final decision tonight, is the general compensation. The Consumer Price Index for the area is roughly 2.2. What we know is that for options, for every one percent that you increase, now, these numbers assume that the full Fire Department is in there, which is an erroneous assumption. Gail did some analysis, actually, I think Alan Weeks did the analysis, we'll give Gail the credit, that if you did move to the pay plan for the Fire Department, then you could reduce the general fund by about $18,000 to $20,000 per percent. So it's not a big offset, but let's just set that aside a minute. Assuming you pass 1% on to each employee, here's the impact on each of the funds. Simple math says that if you do 2%, it's twice that. And other simple math, in the past, you've said $1,000 for each employee, under $50,000 or whatever. I mean, it's really whatever you decide you want to do.
Question. Alan Watson. Has anybody got an idea of what they're going to do percentage-wise?
Who, Alan Watson?
Alan Watson.
We haven't had the budget meeting yet, but the, the figures, I'm, close to 3% about Olson County, because these are people we're going to have to compete with.
From what I understand, it's a little over 2%.
My understanding from the meeting with David Cotton is built into their budget, which certainly hasn't been adopted yet. which certainly hasn't been adopted yet, is two-point-four percent for their employees.
Last year, we gave them the flat sum, right?
Gail, what did we do last year?
It was a percentage, I think it was.
Year before, it was a flat amount?
Yeah, it was a COLA.
A flat dollar amount? Okay.
What we can do is get you the history of the last five years as to what you've done.
I don't like that.
I don't like it at all.
That's, that's.
It was flat. I was like that. I'll start the discussion, I think we ought to go for two-point-two percent of cost of living.
I agree. Anybody else agree with that? Let me see your hands. Anybody not agree with two-point-two, eight-point-two?
I'd rather see the history for the last five years before I make a decision.
Do we not have that already?
I think that I probably have it somewhere. I don't think we have a slide with that.
What we can do is, because obviously, what we're trying to do is to have some, what I'll call jello votes at this point, they're not binding, except on things that you said they were binding on. We will run the numbers to show you what a two percent, I'm sorry, two-point-two percent would be for each fund, and we'll give you the five-year history, so that when we get back together, we are now down to just one or two final things that you need to tell us, is this what you want in your budget, or do you want some other numbers? It's important, you know, the guidance that you're giving us is important, because it all comes down to the bottom line of how much of your general fund balance are you going to be using to move forward. What it'll also show you is that, given the approvals that you have set, and the direction you've set, how does that general fund balance number compare to what you've seen in past years? So you can begin to see it in relation to your past-year budgets. Does that sound like a reasonable plan?
Yes. Do you feel like these numbers include all the friction that's involved, we call it, matching benefits, the additional retirement?
Did you call that friction?
Well, that's about, I mean, something that.
French benefits.
The additional cost of the dollar gain, I guess.
These numbers come from finance, and I can guarantee you, when finance runs those numbers, they include every inch of, for example, we know that the retirement fund contribution had to go up. That's included in here. So all of those numbers, we're comfortable with.
Since there was no motion, there wasn't a, wasn't a actual vote on that issue, correct, Mr. Carter?
That's correct, ma'am.
But we will use it as a general guide to give you more information, if that's acceptable.
Okay. And let me qualify why I said that about that flat fee. I mean, you got, you got, you know, if you're saying you're making your cutoff at fifty thousand dollars, I don't feel like you're being actually fair to a lot of your employees, because unfortunately, in our business, we have to, we do have to employ people that have certain skills, that, you know, push them up over that fifty thousand dollar limit. So I don't see where, you know, that would be very fair to that particular group of employees.
You got to pay the profession.
But let me also.
You got to compete.
Let me also point this out. You know, basically, you have five-hundred-and-sixty employees, so even simple math says that's five-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. If you look at this chart and simple math, you're up to three-fifty, you're up to less than four-hundred thousand dollars, or let's just say four-hundred thousand dollars. So the difference between one thousand across the board versus this plan is about a hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. I'm not saying that's good or bad, I'm just saying, remember that that's the comparison. And on the other hand, if you look at the option two, you can, you know, add it up, you're at three hundred thousand, you're at, you know, for two percent, you're at three hundred thousand and sixty, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
So let me see if I got this right, two percent would be less?
Less than a thousand dollars for each employee, regardless of pay. You're looking at, if you said a thousand dollars for every employee, you have five-hundred-and-sixty employees, you're at five-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. At two percent, you know, somebody help me out here with the math, am I wrong? You're at four-hundred-and-sixty?
Depends on where you went to school, I reckon.
Mayor, with that, I will wave the mic. Those are all the items that we had, I believe, on the budget. Y'all have done an excellent job. We would like to see if you have any other direction before we go to the closings under one city.
Anybody?
I just have a quick point of comment. Thursday, 3:00 P.M., Center for Public Safety, we're having our presentation from task on the opioid gaps, and we would hope that any council member can be there, to please be there.
What time Thursday?
Three, 3:00 P.M. Chief Mayacre?
That's correct.
I actually met with them today, they had some very interesting findings. So, thank you.
National Day of Prayer. As you know, we held that right down at the memorial gardens, we had an excellent turnout. This past week, the mayor participated, with many others, in the National Day of Prayer. The mayor was initially asked to play the guitar and sing, but he said because it was a religious activity, he wouldn't have some. The Jacksonville Anselo Sports Hall of Fame. I can tell you that this past Thursday night, we had probably a hundred people gathered at the Hilton Garden, and we had four wonderful people recognized. As you know, obviously, this is the Colonel. He was recognized as one of the, honored for their support of sports development in the community, Colonel John Kopka, and that was as the title was the.
Spirit.
Spirit, thank you very much, the Spirit Award. Had several council members there, Mr. Thomas, Mr. Warden, I think those were the only two that were able to attend. We also had one of our own, Glenn Hargit. If there's ever been a person who deserved being recognized for community spirit and involvement, I think you'd agree, John Kopka and Glenn Hargit certainly need that bill. When it came to honorees going into the Hall of Fame, you had David Green, who had an outstanding career at Richland's High School, went on to play in the Canadian Football League, and ended up with the Cleveland Browns, I believe I'm correct with that. And then you had in Swansboro, Mr. Tennis himself, the coach, his legacy is coaching at Swansboro and Croatan High School, Jim Sheehan in tennis. So excellent activity, and certainly builds our community as one city. The youth council, on the same night, had their twentieth anniversary event here in City Hall. The Jacksonville Youth Council invited back alumni, several people attended, including the incumbent chair of the chamber, former youth council chair Tiffany Burgess-Choice. Youth council also got to look at pictures for the last twenty years. I don't know what you were doing on Saturday, but there were a whole lot of people in one place, and Michael and Susan and their staffs are to be commended, the mayor and council will be commended, for the Jacksonville Gymboree. I think the last estimate I heard was eighty-five thousand people attended this. Or maybe I missed a zero somewhere, but I believe somewhere between seven and eight thousand people. We had a great day for it, with no rain. We really felt bad about the fact Winterfest basically got rained out, and we were fortunate that the weatherman slid the rain a little away from Saturday's events. But you can see, we started the event with the Marine Corps Band, they did just an outstanding job, and through the day, people came and went. Had a car show, and by the way, the picture that's not here, right across the walkway was a Ford F-150 that was voted the best-looking truck in the contest. At least that's my memory. We also had over, two weekends ago and this past weekend, basketball and softball tournaments. And then we also had obstacle courses. Last thing we'd like to mention is the farmer's market is downtown. Every Tuesday from 9:30 to 1:30, it's on the vacant piece of property that's owned by Mr. Lozera. The rumor that there is pizza there is not correct, because that doesn't technically qualify as farmer-market material, even though many farmers eat pizza. Is that correct, sir?
That's right.
But we want to encourage the public. We have a farmer's market that's out at the Ag Office, I believe it's on Saturdays, and we also have one now downtown, we hope people will come and use it. Great location, had a lot of people out there early this morning. With that, we thank you all for your continued attention. I would remind you that you do not have a workshop on May the fourteenth. You have the North Carolina League of Municipalities meeting, your next workshop is tentatively scheduled for May the twenty-first.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything?
Two, Jerry.
Second.
Second hall of paper?